The City of Dublin Natural Gas provides the most cost-efficient source of energy available today. So for your home, choose the most natural resource. Safe, clean, efficient. All new subdivisions around the Dublin area have natural gas available. Start reducing your energy bills today with Dublin City Natural Gas Department. Natural gas, the smart choice. Call 277-5048 today and let us help you start saving today. At Dexter Meat Company, we provide high-quality, custom-cut, certified Angus beef and is cut fresh every day. At Dexter Meat, we're known for our classic favorites including barbecue meals, whole hogs, chicken ribs, and get this, everyone's favorite, pimento cheese by the pound, baked potato salad, buttermilk biscuits, peach, blueberry, apple, and blackberry cobbler, cakes, honey, mac and cheese, green bean casserole, and more. Are you hungry yet? Too busy to cook this week? Then call 875-1234 and let Dexter Meat feed your family of four or 400. Dexter Meat, closed on Monday and open 10 till 6 Tuesday through Saturday. Check us out on Facebook or online at DexterMeatCompany.com. Dexter Meat, winners of the Georgia Barbecue Association Team of the Year. We are Dexter Meat Company in downtown Dexter.
Hi, I'm Don Carswell here at Dublin Chevy Nissan. We don't want to get back to normal, we want to get better than normal. Our people are working harder than ever to earn your business, whether it's in sales or service. We have plenty of Nissans to choose from and we'll offer you a great buying experience. And folks, there's never been a better time to get more money for your trade. And remember, Don sells cars well only at Dublin Chevy Nissan.
We would not have Councilman Oates who understand that's Councilman Brown. Let us pray.
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful day that was given us. We're thankful for the opportunity to gather to discuss the dealings of the City of Dublin. We ask you to be with us, guide us and direct us in everything we think, say, and do. May it be pleasing to thee in Christ my prayer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to our seated Dublin council meeting. We'll start off with a special presentation, proclamation honoring Dr. Anthony J. Russell Specky. Whereas Dr. Anthony J. Russell Specky was born April 2nd, 1988, to Anita Ellington Foreman and Larry Foreman and Roy Jean Specky. Whereas Dr. Specky was a 2006 undergraduate at Dublin High School who excelled both academically and athletically during his four years at Dublin High School. Whereas Dr. Specky was a member of the 2004-2005 Dublin Basketball Final Four team as well as a member of the 2005-2006 Class AA State Championship team. Whereas Dr. Specky athletic and academic prowess earned him a scholarship to play basketball at the College of Coastal Georgia. Whereas Dr. Specky earned a bachelor's degree at Georgia Southern University, a master's degree at Georgia College and State University, and a PhD from Noble Southeastern University. Whereas Dr. Specky was a teacher of math and also a mentor to students. Whereas Dr. Specky was the inaugural principal of the Heart of Georgia College and Career Academy, principal of Dublin Miller School, and principal at Dublin High School. Whereas Dr. Specky was the recipient of the Dublin Arnold's Excellent in Education Award. He was a kindly man with great integrity and genuine love for others. Now therefore, be it resolved that I am not our fair bet senior, but married to the city of Dublin, herein honored the Dr. Anthony J. Russell Specky family for his service and devotion for the education of our children. I do hereby decree April 2nd, 2021, a Dr. Anthony J. Russell Specky Day in the seat of Dublin and witness thereof, signed by the mayor. Good evening. What's up, Dr. Lee?
I'd like to say, I think the mayor and council on behalf of the family as well as the Dublin City Schools families, all the kindness and expressiveness shown during this tough time for us. And we appreciate how you're honoring his legacy and all he's meant to the young people and staff of Dublin City Schools and this community. Thank you.
He's indeed a great man, a great man to work with, an honorable man. And he showed the city of Dublin and the community going to show miss him for all that he has done. Next on the agenda, we have approval of May 6, 2021, City Council meeting minutes.
Move for approval.
I have a motion by Councilman Smith, Gerald Smith, second by Councilman Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All names, same sign. Ayes have it. Measure approved. Next, we have approval of bills over 3,000.
Move for approval.
I have a motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman Chris Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it. Item number three, approval of purchases over 3,000.
We have one purchase for council consideration. That is for a spare pump for the West Lawrence area pump station. There's two pumps in this station now, and both of them are possibly 10 years old and reaching the end of their service life. So we feel like we'll be taking those out and having them rebuilt soon. We'd like to have a spare on the shelf to set in their place when that time comes.
I have a correction, it's not on West Lawrence.
Just for West Lawrence, right?
We designate this the West Lawrence pump station because when it was put in, West Lawrence High School was out in the area. But the pump station actually serves OFTC in the Travel Center Boulevard area.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a move for approval by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Gerald Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it.
I'm Heath Richster and we just want to invite everybody to come on down to the Houston Clinic and check us out at our new facility. We've been in Dublin for a while now, obviously, but have a new office here and we'd just like you to come down and see some of the new stuff we're offering. And if you need to get checked out, we'd be glad to do that for you. Got to able to do some ultrasound guided injections now and physical therapy and just a little bit better space, so hopefully we can get you in and out of here a little bit quicker.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
Hello, my name is Reggie Gay. I'm the owner and operator of Middle Georgia Insurance right here in Dublin, Georgia. We're excited about a new law that just went into effect on February 15th. There is a new special enrollment period with the healthcare marketplace. It runs through August the 15th and for anyone that doesn't have current health insurance has an opportunity to get health insurance without having to wait for the next open enrollment this fall. This has never been done since the healthcare marketplace has begun. So take advantage of that now before time runs out. At Middle Georgia Insurance, we're continuously working and searching for right plans in the marketplace. Come by today and see us at 1307 Bellevue Avenue, right here in Dublin. No cavemen, no lizards, just great insurance.
Alright, boys, if you want to go to college, you have to clear out another one of these. What if we told you there was a better way to save for your kid's college than pickle jars? Morris Bank's Savings Builder Account and Mula makes saving for your kid's college easier than ever. All you have to do is connect the account to your debit card where it automatically rounds up your purchases to the nearest dollar, depositing that spare change into a Mula account where it will grow into a nice little nest egg for whatever your kids have their sights set on.
First reading and public hearing of the 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance.
Ordinance number 21-08, 2021-2022 Budget Ordinance being ordained by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin. Section 1, it is estimated that the following revenues will be available during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021 and ending June 30th, 2022 to meet the foregoing appropriations according to the following schedules. General Fund, $19,922,351. Confiscated Assets Fund, $22,010. Teasplash, 25% Discretionary Fund, $160,000. Police Other Programs Fund, $650,000. Hotel Motel Tax Fund, $754,000. Special Purpose Tax 2018 Fund, $4,500,386. Special Purpose Tax 2006 Fund, $2,000. Teasplash Fund, $4,750,000. Water and Sewerage System Fund, $8,461,830. Natural Gas System Fund, $16,996,287. Solid Waste System Fund, $3,481,784. Rearview Golf Course Fund, $540,820. Telecommunications Fund, $736,524. For a total of $59,579,392. And expenses are in the same funds for the same amount.
We have a second reading and public hearing of this on our June 3 meeting.
Can we have someone, Jones, if we could, we need to have a public hearing now. The state law requires us to do that at this first hearing. And it was advertised for today. If you have the courtesy to come speak about the public ordinance.
Let me ask one question about this first. You, he read this off of 754,000 on my sheet. And what it says, it's really 75,400, but they left the zero off. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
754,000.
That's correct.
It says 754, but then there's only two zeros behind it. So I don't know if it's a decimal point or...
Is that Hotel Motel?
Yeah, that's on the Hotel Motel.
754,000. On your backup agenda, that's incorrect.
It's correct up there. It's correct up there. I was just reading what y'all said.
We will now close this meeting and open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the budget? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the budget? I will close the hearing and now come back to our public hearing, to our meeting. And I said second reading and hearing of this will be at our June 3 meeting. Alright, next we'll have the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone 4.4 acres more or less located at parcel D09C004 from R1 Single Family Residential Zone to M1 Warehouse and Light Industrial Zone.
This is the zoning map amendment number 21-05, an amendment to the official zoning map of the City of Dublin, Georgia, as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 4.00 acres more or less of land located as a part of parcel D09C004, Dublin, Georgia, from R1 Single Family Residential Zone to M1 Warehousing and Light Industrial Zone. Proposed use is for mini warehouses.
We will now close our meeting, open up our public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this rezoning? Come on up, introduce yourself for the record. I already knew y'all.
Good evening. My name is George Betts. I work with Premier Properties of Dublin and I'm here on behalf of T&amp;H Holdings LLC to speak in favor of rezoning this 4-acre parcel to M1 for the proposed use of mini warehouse storage units. The parcel being rezoned is adjacent to the parcel that already has mini warehouse storage units currently on the property and it's owned by the same parties involved in this application. If you have any questions, just let me know.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this rezoning? Seeing now, we will now close our public hearing, open up our, come back to open up our meeting.
Move for approval.
I have a move for approval by Councilman Gerald Smith, second by Councilman Brown. You called the row.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Gerald Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Chris Smith? Councilman Davis?
Yeah.
Ordinance passes.
Item number six on the agenda. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance and adoption agreement with the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System Defining Benefit Retirement Plan and General Amendment. We will now close our, close our meeting, open up a public hearing. The M1, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's not right. This is for the Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System Defining Benefit Retirement Plan. It's an ordinance and adoption agreement for the City of Dublin and its purpose is to establish a pension committee which will be comprised of the City Treasurer, the Human Resources Director, the Human Resources Coordinator, and the Finance Manager.
Alright. Any other question? We will now close our meeting, open up our public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Alright, is there anyone here to speak in approval of this ordinance? Seeing now, we will now close our public hearing, come back to our, open up our meeting. I want to say to council.
Move for approval.
I got a motion by Councilman Brown for approval, second by Councilman Chris Smith. You called the row, Mr. Brown.
Councilman Davis?
Yeah.
Councilman Chris Smith?
Yeah.
Councilman Gerald Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance passes.
Item number seven on the agenda. Second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to rezone 0.28 acres more or less of property located at 809 North Franklin Street from B2 Highway Oriented Business Zone to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zone.
Ordinance Zoning Map Amendment Number 21-07, an amendment to the official zoning map of the City of Dublin, Georgia as previously amended for the purpose of rezoning 0.28 acres more or less of property located at 809 North Franklin Street from B2 Highway Oriented Business to R4 Multi-Family Residential Zone. Proposed use is a transitional housing.
We will now close our meeting, open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this rezoning? Seeing now, we will now close our hearing, open up our, reopen our meeting. I want to say to council.
I make a motion, we deny this request.
Second.
I have a motion to deny by Councilman Gerald Smith and a second by Councilman Brown. You called the row, Mr. Brown.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, to deny.
Councilman Gerald Smith?
Yes, to deny.
Councilman Chris Smith? Councilman Davis?
Yeah.
Ordinance fails.
Item number seven, eight on the agenda. Discussion and Action on a Resolution to Approve and Accept Options to Purchase Certain Rights Right-of-Way and Edgement for the Stoves Park Transportation Project.
This is Resolution Number 21-12, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve the purchase of certain rights and lay edgements and other rights for the construction of the Stoves Park Road Improvements Project, PI number 0012218, to authorize the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney to sign certain legal documents to effectuate the same, to approve the options attached heretofore, to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
I have a council with you, sir.
I move for approval of the resolution.
Second. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it.
We understand the value of life and we want to help you live it to its fullest. At City of Hope Heart and Vascular Center, we're here to make your standard of living our number-one priority. Dr. Collins A. Cortang, MDFACC, FSCAI, is a five-board certified cardiologist admired for his empathetic approach to patient care. Dr. K is a former non-commissioned officer of the United States Combat Medical Corps with the 2nd Infantry Division and the 101st Airborne Division. He's guided by his military values of loyalty, duty, respect, selfless service, honor, integrity, and professionalism. He served his country and now he's here to stay and serve his community. Dr. K specializes in internal medicine, echocardiography, nuclear cardiology, general adult cardiology, and interventional cardiology. Other areas of expertise include acute and chronic heart attack management, peripheral interventions to save legs from being amputated, heart rhythm abnormalities like atrial fibrillation. At City of Hope Heart and Vascular Center, we do your heart right. Call for an appointment today at 478-353-1970. Accepting new patients and walk-ins. Relax, Dublin. Dr. K and City of Hope has you covered. Dr. Collins A. Cortang, City of Hope Heart and Vascular Center, 207A Fairview Park Drive in Dublin.
Good morning, folks. I'm John Nichols. I'm general manager at the newly-built Bug House Pest Control Office here in Centerville, Georgia on Houston Lake Road, where we've had a number of people, companies that have been involved in trying to get this building up and come in this office ready. And one of those is A-plus Flooring and Construction, Kyle Gerard, really had a major play in everything that happened with this building to get it to where it is today. Very, very pleased with his work and his professionalism and number one, talking and making sure things are done right. But also, as far as examples and flooring and colors and stuff like that, really made a major difference as far as getting the building built. Very thankful with how it went about and how Kyle was very helpful. Answered all the questions that he could. And if he couldn't, then he got back with me and was very timely in making sure that that happened. But I just want to give a shout out to A-plus Flooring and Construction and tell Kyle, we appreciate you. You did a fantastic job. We're very thankful for our new building.
Item number nine, Resolution to Approve a GFL loan in the amount of 1.84 million for construction of a sewer line.
Resolution Number 21-15, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to approve and accept the terms of the loan agreement with the Clean Water State Revolving Fund administered by the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
And that would say to council, motion for approval. I have a motion to approve by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman Chris Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it. Motion for approval. Alright, item number 10 on the agenda. Discussion and Action on a Resolution to Transfer Properties to the Land Bank.
This is Resolution Number 21-13, a resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Dublin authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a quitclaim deed of certain properties to the Dublin Lawrence Land Bank Authority to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
I want to say to council. Is there any motion?
I move for approval.
I second. I have a move for, a motion to approve by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Gerald Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes, nothing, names, same sign. Ayes have it. Item 11, from the agenda of discussion and action on award of bid to Nutter and Associates and Environment Consultants to revise focal work and budget for the way up for the watershed protection plan for the City of Dublin.
We're asking council tonight to award a contract to Nutter and Associates to move forward with our watershed protection plan which will involve the monitoring of stormwater that's discharged into the Okonni River from the City of Dublin. We have a representative from Nutter and Associates online. If you have any questions for them about this proposal.
Do we have a dollar amount that we could just mention to the public?
Yes, sir. The contract is in the amount of $67,250.
That's the contract we're dealing with?
Yes, sir.
Any questions? I have a motion for council.
I move for approval.
I have a move for approval for Councilman Gerald Smith, second by Councilman Chris Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it.
I just want to thank you here from Nutter for being a helpful.
Item number 12 on the agenda. Yes, number 12. First reading on an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance to provide incentives for development of certain dilapidated vacant properties.
Ordinance number 21-09, an ordinance by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin to provide for housing rehabilitation and new development incentives for the dilapidated structures and vacant lots within certain areas of the City of Dublin to provide for authorization for the city manager to waive certain garbage and debris collection fees, to provide for administrative authority for the program, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
We will have our second reading and hearing on June 3, our June 3 meeting. Item number 13 on the agenda. Discussion and action of a resolution to approve a contract with Edith Incorporated.
Resolution Number 21-14, a resolution by the mayor and council of the City of Dublin, Georgia to approve and accept the terms of the agreement with Calix Incorporated for the provision of support services for customer premise equipment and warranty of said equipment, to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver any and all documents to effectuate the purposes of this resolution, to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
I have a reading, I have a motion for council.
Move for approval.
A motion to approve by Councilman Chris Smith, second by Councilman Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it. Item number 14, Discussion and Action on Board Appointments. The mayor did leave this, we'll go ahead with it. We have tonight where Mr. Chris Stokes, who has recently moved, he spoke with Ms. Kessler Holder about his replacement on the youth council commission. And that'd be Ms. Olivia Eason. And we're asking council to reappoint Fred Williams to the ethics committee.
Move for approval of both of those recommendations.
I second.
I have an approval by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Gerald Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Name, same sign. Ayes have it. Item number 15 on the agenda, citizens' comments. If any citizen would like to come and dress council at this time, come up, state your name, and if you're coming, we'll have a pretty many time. No citizens' comment.
At Lake's Alignment, we would like to take this time to thank our community for your support over the last 66 years and especially these last few months with the opening of our brand-new Truck Center. When you drive into Lake's Alignment, you get master-trained technicians like Anthony Penny. Everybody calls him Bug. But it means so much to us. And on behalf of Neil Harden, Lisa, our staff, and the entire Lake family, we thank you for supporting us since 1954. Come see us today. We open every morning at 8 o'clock. And now our Truck Center is open on Saturday to serve your big truck. to serve your big trucks and equipment from eight until 12. At Lake's Alignment, we thank you and this entire community, and we'll continue to serve you with the best-trained staff and friendly, courteous service. Lake's Alignment, hometown people serving hometown people. Come see us today, 104 Johnson Street, East Dublin.
Thinking about what to do after high school? How about jumping directly into your future? Oconee Fall Line Technical College offers hundreds of programs to prepare students for the real world. From business to healthcare to professional and technical services, our graduates go straight into a career. Intuition, surprisingly affordable. At Oconee Fall Line Technical College, you will succeed sooner. Apply today at OFTC.edu.
When your ability to get up out of a chair, stand, walk, and do routine activities without hurting every day, having to take Tylenol, Motrin, and Aleve to get through the day, then it's time to come see us. Again, if you're avoiding activities, you're not going to do things with your friends or your family or your children, then you should not let it impact your life like that. We have things from medications to injections to surgery. A lot of people, I think, are scared to come see us initially because they're not ready for surgery. Eighty-five percent of the people that I see in my office, I'm treating with something other than surgery. It's that small group of people at the end of their disease that are getting knee and hip replacements. So don't be afraid, at least to come and let us check it for you.
Okay, we will speak to Councilman Collins, and let's start with Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Just like to thank everybody for being here. Pleased that we were able to recognize Dr. Geroy Stuckey. I know he meant a lot to a lot of people in our community, and we're so they're going to miss him. Thank you, Dr. Williams, for being here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the family. Thank you, everybody else, for being here. Got beautiful weather outside, enjoy your Friday and weekend. Thanks, y'all, for being here.
Councilman Davis?
Thank you, also want to thank Dr. Williams and the tribe for being here to accept the proclamation from the city for Dr. Geroy Stuckey. And I agree, he's going to be tremendously missed in our community. But I'm glad we were able to do the proclamation. Want to thank all of our citizens for coming to the meeting this evening. And continue to be safe. We are still dealing with the pandemic out there. Look like we could see the light at the end of the tunnel, but continue to be safe.
Councilman Chris Smith?
Also, too, want to thank everyone for coming, and also by the friends for coming to accept the proclamation for Geroy. He is greatly missed by a lot of people throughout the city, so just want to thank you for that. And just everyone, have a great weekend.
Councilman Gerald Smith?
I, too, would like to thank everyone for coming and watching this tonight. Got a lot of things done. Dr. Williams, I'm so glad you came up here for Dr. Stuckey's proclamation. That was nice and deserving, and thank you for being willing to do that. And I was at the funeral, it was a tough thing to get through, for sure. Thank you and your wife for coming. Thank everybody else for coming, and I have no other business. No comment.
Everyone thanks on, on coming down to Jack.
No, it's everyone. No comment.
Alright, to finish it out, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. And as I said, we say, Dr. Williams, thanks for coming to see that for Dr. Stuckey. Something we have deserved. And actually, to remember, we have Memorial Day coming up. If you know with family, you know, often we would rather get happy Memorial Day, but Memorial Day is for, is to remember the ones who gave it all and lost their lives. And we say the military, all gave its all, and all gave all. So it's to remember the ones that gave it all to their family members on this Memorial Day. And if you know someone who was a veteran of their family and is dead, go to the family, and that's what you say Happy Memorial Day to, is to them. So let's remember the ones who served, who gave us this freedom that we greatly deserve and we're grateful that we, that we, that we, that we have. The freedom that we have, we have to thank them, and give them the ultimate sacrifice for it. So let's not forget them, and say a prayer for them and their family. And the ones that's overseas, just remember them in our prayers, and the struggles we see overseas with Israel, that pray for that to come to an end, something, and world peace. And what we have here in the United States, we got to remember. We're all not going to get along, we're all not going to be friends there. We're all not going to agree on everything, but we must learn to disagree. And say we're going to disagree, even the Bible says, "Come with us reason together", and sit down and talk about things. We must be willing to sit down, have an open ear, and listen, the key word is listen. Listen to what each other's saying, see if we can come to a solution, and not talk at each other, not about each other. But let's talk to them, listen, and come to a solution. But both sides must be willing to listen and give them their bit. One side can't be giving, giving, the other side not willing to move. So that's what we call compromise, so we must learn to compromise. Even children, those amazing, a job I do at Kellam Foster up in Morning, I had to pick up in the neighborhood, and the route was a high school, middle school route. And I went and picked up a young, white middle school, and I picked up this high school, white female. And he got, we spoke to the white, he spoke to the, he spoke to her, and they had a conversation the whole way to school, "How you doing?" "How you doing?", "This is what I did, probably didn't I?" And I sat there, tried, and I was listening. I said, "Now see, we as adults can learn a lot from them." They said, "Oh", the whole conversation going back and forth. And we as adults, we can't sit down and sit down and talk because we got issues that we sit there, we got one or two things that, oh, we can't talk. They had a nice polite conversation all the way to the middle school. She enjoyed the conversation, I wouldn't know to be ignore, take her earphones in, but she sat there and talked to him the whole way, and that made his day. I don't know where that gone every morning, but she did, he did the next day, and I drove the bus the next day. But it's going, I'm saying, you know what, this is amazing, how children sit there and do things, and we as adults, we can't get along. So please, let's not let them get along. Anything else to come, you say? The meeting is adjourned.